Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. It's time to get educated on your Second Amendment right. It's time to get locked and loaded with Gun Sports Radio. Your hosts Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey will teach you everything there is to know about firearms, self-defense, and the laws that affect your American right to own and bear arms. Now, here's your hosts Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey. All right, folks, welcome to this Gun Sports Radio, can you believe, show 167.
Here we are.
And we are rocking the world right here on FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. Catch that microphone, brother, catch it. This segment is brought to you by The Gun Range San Diego, 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, 10 to 10, seven days a week, Nordstroms of Gun Ranges. Go to TheGunRangeSanDiego.com, TheGunRangeSanDiego.com, and you will be pleasantly surprised if you're a first-time shooter, middle shooter, or an old-time shooter. They will take care of you like family. Hey, by the way, we are broadcasting live from the gun show at the San Diego County Fair, December 15th, 1 to 5. Come on down, say hi, get a picture taken with me, Michael, and Lance that Sunday, December 15th, 1 to 5, and we really want to thank San Diego County gun owners for helping us get down there. All right, we got a special call-in guest? Let's see, yes, we do. Who might that be, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, we do. Johnny Lee Deng is running for San Diego City Council.
Okay.
And I asked him to come on the show to, as a candidate, and talk a little bit about a conversation he and I had. So Johnny, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here. How are you?
Good, doing well.
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Did, okay, so first off, did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yes, Johnny Lee Deng, that's completely correct, yes.
Excellent, and you're running for-
Call me Johnny.
Excellent, Johnny, and you're running for City Council in San Diego, which district?
District 9, which encompasses city heights region, pretty much everything east of 805, north of the 94 freeway, and south of the 8 freeway in San Diego.
Okay, excellent, and we sent you our questionnaire, which we send a lot of candidates our questionnaire, and you sent it back, you answered it, correct me if I'm wrong, you went through and answered it, and generally were supportive of the Second Amendment, but said you did not want an endorsement. And the reason you gave that you didn't want an endorsement is you said that PACs are destroying our political system, and said that you did not want to be beholden to, to, you know, to PACs. Now, of course, San Diego County Gun Owners is a political action committee, and we support the Second Amendment, and being beholden to us would be being beholden to supporting the Second Amendment. So why don't you want to be beholden to supporting the Second Amendment?
Oh, well, I want to differentiate the two. I mean, being beholden to the Second Amendment is totally different than being beholden to you guys.
Well, how is it different?
And I-
How is that different?
Specifically.
How is it different?
I said specifically that I'm not talking about your guys' organization.
Well, no, you specifically were talking about our organization, Johnny. We, you said you did not want our endorsement because you do not want to be beholden. We support the Second Amendment, which means you don't want to be beholden to supporting the Second Amendment. So why specifically do you think that we as a PAC are destroying the political system?
I didn't say you guys.
No, that's exactly what you said, Johnny. I'm sorry, I have it here in writing. It's exactly what you said.
You can read it, read it, I don't know what you said. I said specifically that I'm talking about all PACs in general, that they are destroying this country politically. It's because the political official, politicians, the public officials end up doing exactly what the public action committees who got them elected want them to do. And sometimes they're not able to make decisions that really affect or that the people who elect them really want, or that is really good for the overall success of the government, instead it's for the people who got them into office. And it's not just you, it's all the political action committees put together. Eventually, yes, they do formulate two sides, generally, that support one thing or the other. And with that being said, I think the answer is never just one side or the other, but to really look at the issue individually and make a decision based on that. And because I want to do that, I don't want to be beholden by the special interests that have taken over our political system, that I am not taking any special interest money, no matter who it is, whether it's you guys, or the other side, or anybody else who's related to special interest groups.
I see, and the statement you made to us was that you're not going to, that PACs, you don't want our endorsement? You don't want us to give you any kind of donation? You don't want us to spend any money on your behalf? But you're happy if our members donate to you? Isn't that convenient?
Well, I said, I am-
So what, so what are you doing that, what are you doing that's so, that's so special with this money that a pro-Second Amendment organization would not be doing? Why, why can people donate to you if they want to support the Second Amendment, but donating to us is, is not good? You don't want to be beholden to a group that would hold your feet to the fire and make sure that you stand up for the Second Amendment, but you will be, you're okay with our members donating to you? Why, why isn't that hypocritical?
I think it's more like I'm beholden to the people who, not just your members or any other individual, I'm just saying, in general, the individuals are representing their own interests of the people in the community, wherever they may be from, and I'm looking for individual support, not from major groups like political action committees or political parties. Even though I may align with one or the other, those are the types of support I'm not looking for, because yes, I do want to beholden to the orders and the people who generally are not special interest groups or PACs. They have one issue that they're generally pushing for or another, and the individuals in the community, they may not be trying to push those same issues. They may agree with me on one or two issues or certain issues.
Well, and that, and that, you and I met at a Republican Party meeting, so you don't want to be beholden to the Republican Party, but you're okay with going to the Republican Party meetings and getting their support? You don't want to be beholden to PACs? You think that they're destroying the politics, but you'll answer our questionnaire and you'll be okay with our members giving you money? I mean, this whole thing is like, I got to tell you, my assertion here is that the reason that politics is screwed up is because there aren't enough organizations that are single-issue and focused like us. There aren't enough organizations that are standing up for something that somebody believes in. There are too many politicians that are okay with taking money from people, you know, for their own, to get a job, right? To get a brand-new job and a shiny new office. They're are okay with, with their own ambition, but they're not okay with a group of people pooling their money and saying, hey, you know what? Enough's enough. We need to make sure that people are beholden to us. We need to make sure that we as gun owners, that politicians are beholden to our wishes because we stand up for the Second Amendment. We stand up for the Second Amendment. We raise money for the Second Amendment, and we make sure that people get elected because they support the Second Amendment, and then after they're in office, we make sure they're beholden to us. That's the whole point. Now, if you don't want to be beholden to us, you know, if you want to continue to say that we're destroying the political process, then I would highly recommend that not a single gun owner in San Diego give you a dime, walk a neighborhood for you, or give you their vote. Because what you're doing is not just against the Second Amendment, it's against the First Amendment. People's ability to say, hey, you know what? We're going to pool our money, we're going to make sure that our voices are heard. Now, I don't understand fully why you're against this, but it seems like you're trying to play both sides of the fence here, and that it's frankly insulting to our members. You know, we've done a lot of really great things to support the Second Amendment. Our members have been able to get CCW so that people can keep, can bear arms for their defense. Our members have been able to get shooting on public, we've done a lot of things. What have you done to further the Second Amendment?
Um-
Yeah, nothing.
I don't think-
Nothing.
Yeah, I never-
Nothing, but you want to make sure the gun owners give you money so you can get elected, and you want to make sure, you know, that our members know that your opinion of us is that we're destroying politics. I appreciate you coming on, Johnny, but I really don't think there's any room for gun owners to support your campaign, or any room for our gun owners to give you any kind of support at all. I think you're extremely wrong in your mischaracterization of what quote-unquote "special interest groups" do. I think they're crucial to the political process, and I think that people banding together to make sure their voices are heard and holding people like you accountable, I think that's crucial. I think that is the political system. And I think the lack of that is what the problem is in politics today. And that people coming out and, you know, making sure that their platform is a bunch of bumper stickers like, I don't support special interest. That's the problem, Johnny. That's the problem. Appreciate you coming on the show. Good luck with your race.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I think we're done. Appreciate it, Johnny.
All right, Johnny, thanks. All right, we're going to take a quick break. When we come back, more right here on Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, welcome back. This is Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. For those of us in California, lawful AR ownership is increasingly under attack. California's assault weapon laws make it impossible to legally keep your AR rifle with the features it was born with. What's the solution? It's the KALI Key. The KALI Key removes your rifle from the definition of an assault weapon by converting any mil-spec direct impingement AR platform rifle into a straight pull-bolt action rifle. It's a true drop-in solution, and less than a couple of minutes, you are good to go. No milling, no aesthetic modifications, and no turning off your gas systems either. Keep your entire AR collection intact at a price you can afford with KALI Key. We love those guys. Check them out at kalykey.com, that's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y, K-A-L-I-K-E-Y dot com. And what's the best defense for self-defense in those horrible new red flag laws? Firearms Legal Protection. Mike, Lance, and I use them, you should too. Firearms Legal Protection is a legal defense program for lawful gun owners with a 24/7 emergency hotline and plans designed specifically for the firearm owner. Firearms Legal Protection is the best legal protection for self-defense. You need to be ready if that knock on the door comes to take your guns away using red flag laws. Talk to the good folks at Firearms Legal Protection today. That's Firearms Legal Protection at www.firearmslegal.com, or call 469-310-9100, that's 469-310-9100, that's firearmslegal.com. You need to be ready for those new red flag laws. And if you end up getting into a little bit of trouble with Firearms Legal Protection, they could send you the greatest lawyer on the planet, John Dillon, from Gatski Dillon and Balance LLP. Before you get to any kind of a situation, you need to email him at cafirearmslaw.com, or call John at 760-431-9501. Not only is he an awesome lawyer, but he's a, he's a gun enthusiast, so he'll know what you're talking about, and he can get you out of all of the sticky situations that you may get yourself into. With that being said, how's it going, John?
Hey, how's it going, guys?
Not bad at all. How are you doing?
I'm all right. I'm still in a state of shock, recovering from the 15 new gun control bills that our dictator-in-chief Newsom signed on Friday. But we're still alive, so we're good.
What has, what has he done now?
Oh, we've gone off the deep end to the point where I am sure a lot of people are missing Mr. Jerry Brown. If anyone thought it was bad with him, we were on another level these days.
Well, that's, it was funny, I had some folks at KUSI this morning, and we were all saying the same thing. We thought Brown was bad?
Yeah, it's, it's been pretty crazy. So on Friday, like I said, 15 bills were passed, all with regard to gun control, and none of which is going to help, you know, put criminals in jail, but I'll just sum up some of the worst ones, but I do suggest anyone listening would go and read up on these things, because they are significant, and they're going to, they're going to have lasting effects for years and years to come. So first one, just because it hits home for my own lawsuit, is AB-61, which amended or changes the law that bans anyone under 21 from being able to purchase a firearm. So under the, you know, the previous law that was in effect this year, if you got a hunting license, you were able to buy long guns. This new SP, I can't believe it's AB-61, or SB-61, further restricts the law, even though it's only been in effect for, what, 10 months now? So 10 months into it, we're already changing the law and making it more strict. But basically, even if you get a hunting license, you are not able to buy a semi-automatic centerfire rifle. So, you know, doesn't even matter if you go get your hunting license. The state still thinks for some crazy reason that the Second Amendment doesn't apply to you, and you shouldn't be allowed to purchase a firearm.
Well, that was, that was a direct result of that absolute monster that shot the lady at the synagogue. That, that's what that's from, unfortunately, which is-
Exactly, and the worst part about that, though, is, well, clearly the law didn't work, and the criminal, the evil person, still managed to get his gun and do what he wanted to do. You know, the only thing this is affecting, it's prohibiting law-abiding, ordinary 18, 20-year-old adults from being able to purchase firearms. And just because, you know, there's so many, I'll cut off my discussion on that issue right now. 61 also, now he's going to prohibit people from buying more than one centerfire semi-automatic rifle every 30 days. So in California, we already had it to where you could only buy one handgun every 30 days. Now you can only buy one semi-automatic centerfire rifle every 30 days. Another-
I feel so much safer.
Yeah, I know, of course, we're all safer now. Another horrible law, or it's actually a couple of them, massive expansion to gun violence restraining orders, or red flag laws, more accurately described as gun confiscation orders. Basically, it now extends gun violence restraining orders to five years, if you get one placed on you, instead of one year. And also, this is the most dangerous part-
All of them? Wait, wait, wait. I'm sorry to interrupt. All of them? All gun violence restraining orders are now five years?
Yeah, so they, instead of it being one year, it can be up to five years, or gun violence restraining-
It can be, or it automatically is?
If you're, if you go through the quote "due process," and they rule that you are a danger, or whatever their standard is going to be made up to be. But the worst part, that's not even the worst one, the worst part about gun violence restraining orders is the fact that now your coworkers, students, teachers, employees, employers are now all able to petition to get gun violence restraining orders against people. So no longer is it just immediate, close family members or police, it's now pretty much anyone that you come across in your daily life, which it's, you know, it's not a, doesn't take a strong imagination to see what this is going to, you know, result in. You're going to have people that just don't like guns, they don't like the fact that their neighbor owns a gun or has a firearm, and it's so easily going to turn into the new doxing or the new swatting, where you don't like someone, you're pissed off at your neighbor, your coworker, your teacher, a student at your school, you make a phone call, and because of that phone call, their door is getting kicked down, their guns are getting confiscated, and now they have to go through this, you know, just sham of court process in order to get their rights back. Because your rights are stripped from you, and your guns are taken from you based off of essentially nothing. It's terrible. So these are not good. Another just crazy insane law that, you know, the only good thing about it is it doesn't take effect till 2024, is the firearm precursor part requirement. So anything that's defined as a firearm precursor part is going to have to go through a firearm precursor licensed dealer, or, you know, in other words, a gun shop, and you're going to have to do background checks for firearm parts, essentially. It's just, again, the state is now trying to go after not just firearms, but parts of firearms, stuff that has never been regulated in the national or the state level, and they've just gone so far beyond what you even thought would be possible. The state, with this governor, we have some insanity going on.
Yeah, we've been talking about the precursor part thing for three years.
Yeah, and it's been something that's been threatened, and a lot of people, when they heard about it, they're like, oh, there's no way, they can't do that, how are they going to do that? Well, Newsom just did, and you better believe that, just like with the assault weapon registration, just like with the ammunition registration schemes, you know, come 2024, the DOJ is not going to be prepared to handle this new system or this new process. So people that, you know, if you're changing something on your gun, and a spring goes flying across the room and you lose it, or, you know, trigger breaks on your firearm or firing pin breaks, well, now you're going to have to go and possibly get a background check at a gun shop before you can buy that part. And just like we're having these insane issues with the ammunition background checks and registration stuff, you better believe the same thing is going to happen with these, the parts. It's, it's just going to be a complete mess, and you're going to have people that are good, law-abiding individuals who have, you know, no ill will in their heart whatsoever, who are going to be randomly denied for some unknown reason because the systems aren't up to date, the systems aren't done well, and frankly, our, you know, state doesn't care enough to make it work.
So how do they, John, can I, can I kind of just talk real-world about the precursor thing? If I want to go buy, you know, some flip-up sights for my AR, am I going to have to go through a background check?
It'll be interesting. The wording in the law, is anything necessary for firearm function, I believe, or something similar to that? So, well, what's necessary to make the gun function?
So it sounds like it was really aimed at like, you know, the 80% lowers?
Yeah, it's aimed at the 80% lowers, that's, you know, their main goal, but the language is broad enough to where it is going to be very dangerous in the sense of, well, you know, my trigger, that's vital to the firearm operation and use, and, you know, the springs that are attached to that trigger are also vital. You know, your buffer spring, your buffer tube, you know, it's all sorts of stuff that could fall under this broad definition that they're using, and that's going to be the problem.
But like brakes, and brakes, and foregrips, and pistol grips, and sights, and red dots, and scopes, and that doesn't sound like they would fall under, but it sounds like everything inside the gun. Certainly magazines, well, magazines, right? A magazine would fall under that.
Yeah, arguably, a magazine could fall under that, and arguably, a sight could. You know, how do you accurately fire your gun unless you have sights? You know, I don't know. It's going to be one of the things that we're going to find out come 2024, and how they're, you know, the DOJ is going to choose to interpret that language. And again, just like a lot of the assault weapon stuff, it's not going to be based off any, you know, rational reason or knowledge.
Yeah, it's not going to make sense.
It's going to be, yeah, it's not going to make sense at all. There's going to be contradictions within itself, and, you know, this part's highly illegal and dangerous and needs a background check, but this part's totally fine, and they do the exact same thing. It's going to be crazy. So yes, unfortunately, we just got hit with another gun mageddon with the passage of all these laws, and none of them are going to do anything to help, you know, the law-abiding and gun owner.
Right. None at all. I mean, the felons are still going to be felonious, and anyone who wants to, you know, ship stuff down to Mexico, they're going to do it anyway. I mean, it's just, none of this, their argument, it makes any sense.
Totally.
It just scares people.
All right, buddy.
If there's any question that the state just doesn't want people to own guns-
Right.
Just look at the laws that are being passed, and it's very clear.
Yep. Yeah, you don't have to be rocket science to figure this one out. All right, buddy.
Mm-hmm.
Always great seeing you.
Great job, John. Thanks.
You have a wonderful day. This is FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, welcome back. This is Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. Hey, folks, for those of us in California, the lawful AR ownership is increasingly under attack. California assault weapon laws make it impossible to legally keep your AR rifle with the features it was born with. What's the solution? It's the KALI Key. The KALI Key removes your rifle from that definition of an assault weapon by converting any mil-spec direct impingement AR platform rifle into a straight pull-bolt action rifle. It's a true drop-in solution, and less than a couple of minutes, you are good to go. No milling, no aesthetic modifications, no turning off your gas system either. Keep your entire AR collection intact at a price you can afford with KALI Key. We love those guys. Check them out at kalykey.com, that's K-A-L-I-K-E-Y dot com. All right, this segment is brought to you by The Gun Range San Diego, the Nordstroms of Gun Ranges, just not the price. 7853 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, open 10 to 10, seven days a week. They have so many things to offer you as a shooter. You have to go to the website, because I don't have enough time. TheGunRangeSanDiego.com will fill you in on everything they have to offer, but for some of the things that you're wondering about and you want to get an answer now, we got Jason on the line. How you doing, bud?
I'm okay. How you doing, Dave?
I'm doing just fine. Sounds like you should be doing radio.
Yeah. Well, good, and that's a good thing to hear from you.
Yeah, so what's kicking, brother?
Oh, not much, not much, not much, just keeping busy.
Well, you helped me, Jason, you helped me with Christmas, or a birthday present last time I was in there. Remember, I was, I was in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, I appreciate it very much. They enjoyed it.
You're very, very welcome.
My birthday's already gone by.
No, well, it wasn't for you. It wasn't for you. How about you, Lance? Was it for your birthday, Lance?
No, mine's coming up, though.
It was, but you know what I got him? You know what they have? They have those cool, they're the inflated, the tire inflator caps.
Yeah, the green slime, or no?
No, 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 no.
He's just talking about the little caps that go on your valve stems.
Yeah, the valve, the valve stem caps for your tires.
Oh, the pressure caps.
And they're like 45 caliber brass, right? So-
Oh, gosh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I bought a set of that, and I bought a coffee, coffee mug that said something about guns and coffee, so. So for all your birthday gift needs, The Gun Range San Diego, you guys totally help me out. Thank you.
Well, great, I'm very glad, I'm very glad. Anybody, anybody into hunting anytime soon?
Well, we were just talking about that, so.
Yeah, in fact, yeah, Camp Pendleton has reached out to my partner and I, we do a military safety training, and the new base commander just came in, and he is an avid hunter. So I've given the task to Michael Schwartz, and he's going to get with Sandy, and I'm sure they're going to reach out, and you'll be hearing from them soon, but the military's looking for some, looking for some love.
Well, great, that's fantastic. Yeah, a lot of, a lot more people are hunting, kind of starting around, usually it begins around August, more people kind of get into it, and, you know, tend to get into it September, October, so we got a lot more customers asking about, you know, what kind of rifle is good for hunting. You know, in California, it's mostly, mostly pigs and deer. 308 is the recommended round, just because it's so versatile, and I would recommend a Tika T3X Lite. It's only about $650 to $700, depending on which model you get. Very, very light, super nice trigger, very smooth bolt throw.
What's that model number again?
It's a T3X, a Tika, the brand is called Tika.
Yep.
Really nice rifle.
Just pull one out and shine it up. Lance will be there in about 40 minutes. There you go.
And then, who makes a Tika again? Is that Finnish? I can't remember.
It is Finnish, that's right. Yeah, Finland.
Pretty good.
Almost everything, almost everything out of Finland is match grade. It can't leave the factory till it shoots well enough. It has a, it has a shoot within an accuracy, like, it has to have like a proof of accuracy before it leaves the factory. So, yeah, I used to be a big, you know, on the 2000s, I was a big like Remington 700 fan.
Yeah.
Winchester Model 70 fan. Now the Tika's kind of the way to go. The quality's all there, it's cheaper, it's just the way to go.
And it's a, you think that's a lighter rifle also than a-
It is, oh, yeah, lighter, much lighter. It just makes a lot of sense. Lighter, more accurate, better trigger, smoother bolt throw, and cheaper. It's got all those check bars.
And what caliber are you selling those in?
We got 308. 308's going to be the most versatile. We can get a different caliber if somebody would like.
So you just used a term twice, and you said it had a smooth bolt throw. Tell the, tell the ladies and gentlemen what a bolt throw is.
What is that?
Bolt throw, that's just the word, the term you use when the bolt action, when you're cycling the bolt handle itself. When you, when you fire a bolt-action rifle, you have to pull the bolt up, back, up and back to kick out the round, you just fire the casing. Then you push it forward and down to load the next round. And a lot of rifles, Winchesters, Remingtons, it's a little bit, you know, compared to today's standards, a little bit stiffer, up, back, forward, down, you know, that whole action. Tika has a slightly shorter and smoother bolt throw. Tika has a slightly shorter and smoother bolt throw. They smooth all the parts out so that it's a much, just smoother. There's just less resistance and it's just easier, which means a faster cycling rate, which translates to a faster or a higher rate of fire.
Well, not only that, but probably also keep you on target better.
Yeah, that's.
The follow-through.
Right. Absolutely right.
Yeah, that's cool. That's really cool.
That is right.
And, um, other hunting stuff? So, um, someone, uh,
You guys carry like hunting ammo down there as well, right?
We do, we do, we do. Uh, you do have to have, you know, lead-free ammo now. So we've got that stuff, you know, uh, we got the, we got the, the special, it just, the rounds don't have any lead in them. You know, that's just a requirement now. So we've got that, uh, 308, 308 six, whatever have you, whatever you need, we've got it.
So if it's not lead, what is it? What are they using?
Uh, copper, copper in some cases, steel in others. They tend to be more expensive, uh, but they are the same thing. They do the same thing and they, they fulfill California's requirement.
Other than the cost, is there really a big disadvantage to, uh, using copper over lead?
Not particularly, no. Nope. They're, they're just as, they're just as accurate. It's the same thing. It's just a different material they use for the, uh, for the round itself. That's it.
Nice. And then, uh, how about the hunting licenses? Uh, you, you guys do that there? You send some, you send them somewhere? What do you do?
Well, we don't do hunting licenses. Uh, hunting license, you wanna get, you wanna get that somewhere like, like Big Five Sports Authority, something like that. Everything else, literally everything else, we can help you with.
Yeah.
Uh, the gun, the rifle, or sorry, the rifle, the ammunition, uh, tips, where to go, anything like that, we will help you with.
And plus.
And we even have a, yeah.
Go ahead. They, they, well, if they've, they've had the rifle for a while, it might be a good idea just to bring it down so you guys could take a look at it.
Absolutely. And you can always ask any of our range safety officers to fire just a round or two out of it, just to see what they think to kinda get a control, uh, like a control test out of it, you know, to see if it's on point, if the scope you've, uh, you, you've selected for it is on point, things like that.
And glass?
Do all that.
You, you guys can take care of their glass. Yeah, a lot of people, you know, tactical scopes, tactical glass have, they've gotten, you know, real, real popular. Um, how has that affected the, the hunting, a typical hunting scope? Or is there a big difference? Is, uh, you know, are they getting more complicated on the hunting side or, you know, talk a little bit about that?
You know, they're not, not particularly more complicated or anything. It hasn't really changed much as far as hunting goes. Hunting, most people will still pick up a loophole, a Vortex brand scope, something like that. Uh, now, scopes have changed as far as precision shooting goes. You know, when you're talking about, you know, 600, 800, 1,000, 1,500 yards, uh, it had, the game has changed. You have first focal point scopes, things like that. Uh, that's one of those kinda buzzwords right now, first focal point. Uh, little things like that for long, long range shooting, that has changed. Hunting, been pretty much the same.
What'd say, what, people are getting like a, like an eight power or 10 power and it's still got crosshairs and?
People will get a, uh, a, uh, you know, for anything within, say, a thousand yards, people, somebody typically buy a four to 16 power variable scope. You can, you can adjust it anywhere from four power magnification to 16 for something really far away. Now, if you get a crazy nice scope, something, you know, $2,000, $3,000, uh, on a scope, a piece of glass, that's when you're talking about US Optics, you know, that kind of level brand. Uh, that's when you're talking about like a five to 25 power scope, something like that, or even 30 power. And that's for like 338 Lapua, the really big, big rounds, the ones that, you know, every round costs four, $5, a good lunch. Uh, that kinda thing, that's really only for like the really veteran shooters.
Yeah, cause most, when you're going hunting in Southern California, you're looking at, uh, like you said, pigs and deer, and that's under 150 yards?
Typically, you know, most, most hunters shoot with, well within 100 yards. Most of the time it's like between 70 and 100. And it's actually a, an easier, uh, it's an easier ra- range shot, which you, what you want. You know, you wanna maximize your effective shot.
Yeah, it's not like you're, you know, going, you know, ridge line to ridge line in Colorado and you need to.
No, not.
Eight hundred yards or, you know, nothing like that. It's, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Have you ever done any pig, pig hunting in Southern California?
No, I haven't. No, I haven't.
I haven't either. We need to put together a crew and go.
Well, you know, Dylan goes.
You know who goes is Dylan.
Yeah.
See, Dylan wanted me to go and he was gonna sit in the tree and I was supposed to get on the ground and go run around.
And oink.
Yeah, and that way, when, when I'm supposed to run by the tree, as the pig is chasing me and he was gonna shoot it, that was his idea. Needless to say, I have, I have not signed up for that excursion.
Not yet, huh?
No.
We need to get a crew together and go pig hunting. I know they have some in Riverside, but then up in like San Bernardino, or not San Bernardino, San, Santa Barbara area, actually, there's a lot of pig hunting from what I understand.
I think they have a pretty.
Yeah.
An infestation actually of pigs up there.
Yep.
You know, I, I heard, I heard Sam the gunman likes obscure gun questions and I've got one for him.
Oh.
Where I go here.
What do you got?
You know, so, so most people have never heard of this. Have you ever heard of a semi-automatic revolver?
Well.
An auto revolver?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I would ask Sam the gunman, can you name the two main commercial semi-automatic revolvers? There's one from about 100 years ago and one from the 90s. I would ask him that.
So the question is from Jason from The Gun Range San Diego, name the two main semi-automatic revolvers in, in production now?
That's right.
Commercial.
Uh, oh, they're, they're not in production anymore, but I, I, the only hints I'll give is that one's about 100 years old and the other is from the 90s.
All right. Text, uh, text Lance the answer and when we come back, that's, that's what we'll ask him.
Cause you can tell that Michael Schwartz does not know the answer.
I don't know the answer to that.
You don't know the answer to any of these questions.
I'm not sure I know what a semi-automatic revolver is, but I don't wanna say it on the air.
No, we don't wanna look.
Is this thing on? Is this thing on right now?
Testing, testing. All right, folks. Hey, thanks a lot, buddy. You have a good day and folks, go down and see Jason. He'd love to see you.
Thank you very much.
All right, buddy. That's The Gun Range San Diego, folks. Take a rundown. All right, hey, we're gonna take a quick break. When we come back, we got Sam the gunman on the line. Well, he's not on the line yet, but he will be, so he doesn't even know ahead of time.
So he can't Google it yet.
Right here on.
Good luck, Sam.
FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, hey, welcome back. This is Gun Sports Radio, FM 96.1, AM 1170, The Answer. So what's the best defense for self-defense in those horrible, horrible, horrible new red flag laws? Firearms Legal Protection. Mike Lance and I use them. Firearms Legal Protection is a legal defense program for lawful gun owners with a 24/7 emergency hotline and plans designed specifically for the firearms owner. Firearms Legal Protection is the best legal protection for self-defense. You need to be ready if that knock on the door comes to take your guns away using red flag laws. Talk to the good folks at Firearms Legal Protection. That's Firearms Legal Protection at www.firearmslegal.com or give them a call, 469-310-9100. That's 469-310-9100, www.firearmslegal.com. All right, and we got Sam the gunman. Glad to have you back on, sir.
Good to be back.
Little, little Metallica lead-in music for you.
Yeah.
You know the question's gonna be good this week when we lead in with Metallica. Are you ready for this one?
Sure, let's have it.
All right, Sam the gunman, in our segment called Stump My Nephew, because Sam is not just the gunman, he's also my very, uh, own nephew and, uh, he is, how old are you now, Sam?
Twenty.
Twenty years old and he is a, uh, cornucopia, variable, uh, veritable cornucopia of, uh, of gun trivia knowledge. So, okay, so this is actually, you, you weren't on the phone. You didn't hear the question, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so Jason from The Gun Range San Diego submitted a question. Uh, this is a cross-segment, uh, uh, question here. His question is, Jason from The Gun Range San Diego wants to know, you know, one second here. Okay, so what were the two, what, name the two commercial semi-automatic revolvers? Name two commercial, the two most popular, if they might be the only two, uh, from what he was asking, the two most popular or only two commercial semi-automatic revolvers. He said one's about 100 years old and the other one was, uh, from the 90s. So he's looking for two semi-automatic revolvers.
All right, thanks very much for the question, Jason, and I need to lead in with a little bit of background. Um, so most of you who have done a fair amount of shooting, particularly with revolvers, will know that to fire a revolver, you either have to cock the hammer each time you fire it, if it's single action only, or with most revolvers, you just get a very long and heavy trigger pull if you don't cock the hammer. So people have had this idea that if you could figure out a way to use some of the energy from the fired cartridge to cock the hammer, then you would have a nice crisp trigger pull like on a semi-automatic pistol, but it would still be a revolver. And as far as I'm aware, the first person to really do this and make it, or the first revolver to really do this and make it successful was the Webly Fosbury, um, as you said, about 100 years ago, 100 something years ago.
Da-da, that one's correct.
Right.
That used this sort of recoil system where the frame was kind of divided into two parts and the barrel and cylinder assembly would recoil on the frame and cock the hammer. It's a really interesting system. And then the, uh, the other one I know of is called the Mateba Unica, and I'm not sure completely how that one works, but it, um, it has a very distinctive appearance because another one of its interesting design elements is that it fires from the bottom cylinder, like the Chiappa Rhino. And in fact, the Chiappa Rhino took a lot of design elements from the Mateba Unica. I think the same guy designed it.
All right, is that your final answer?
Yeah, that's my final answer.
Wow.
It is right.
Dinning, yay.
Awesome. Fabulous job, Sam the gunman.
So the idea is, uh, anybody that's ever fired a revolver knows that, uh, the, uh, the hammers, uh, basically this is a way to, to make the, the trigger pull smoother cause if it's, if it's single action, then the, the hammer's, you know, pulling the trigger's super easy cause the hammer's already back. If it's double action, the whole thing comes all the way back and goes all the way forward. Um, so it's typically, uh, you know, we're talking about accuracy issues when, when you have to do a big, long, you know, 10, 12-pound trigger pull or whatever for, for that sort of, is that, is that what we're talking about? We're, we wanna make sure that it has, it's kinda got the advantages of both single and double action revolvers in one.
Exactly.
Wow. How do you know this stuff?
I pick it up here and there.
That's amazing. I mean, you nailed it. Are there any, I don't even know if there are any. Are there any others that have tried to, any other manufacturers that have tried to do that?
I'm sure some manufacturers have tried to make them. Those are the only two that I'm aware of that had any moderate amount of commercial success, but fundamentally the, the idea of a, of a self-cocking revolver is kind of an answer looking for a question in many ways, because if you want that advantage of having a short, crisp trigger pull as opposed to a double action pull each time, then there's not much point in having a very mechanically complicated, expensive revolver instead of just getting a semi-automatic pistol.
Well, I, I understand why they would do it 100 years ago, cause they weren't quite there, but I guess somebody, the, the second manufacturer tried doing this just like, like 30 years ago.
Yeah, something like that.
Which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So the, the, what is it? Chiappa? Is that how it's pronounced?
Um, yeah, Chiappa, Chiappa, something like that. I'm not really sure. I think it's Chiappa.
Chiappa. Chiappa Rhino, uh, as you said, fires from the cylinder all the way down to the bottom. I'm sure, I'm sorry, the, uh, uh.
You're right.
Yeah, all the way down to the bottom.
The bottom chamber in the cylinder.
The chamber.
It's a way with the complicated self-cocking mechanism and it just uses that bottom firing system.
Well, why did the Rhino do it though? Cause it's not self, do you have any idea why, why they decided to do that?
It's all about bore axis. The lower the bore axis is in relation to your hand, the more the recoil will be directed straight back into your arm instead of, um, it's kind of hard to explain without a, a diagram, but basically if the barrel is high up above the center of your hand, then the muzzle will tend to flip as the pistol tries to sort of torque its way out of your hand. But if the barrel is directly in line with your hand, then it'll just push straight back. And so the recoil is supposed to be more manageable. Sort of the same idea of the AR-15 inline stock. It's pushing directly back into your shoulder instead of trying to climb on you.
That's a bonus gun thing that we did not.
And bore axis. We got bore axis on it too.
It was actually my, uh, he was my, he was like a Russian barber up in San Francisco that used to cut my hair. He was really good, but, uh, anyway, that was awesome, Sam.
You are unbelievable, my friend. I gotta tell you, you are just a plethora of knowledge and just keep it up.
I certainly try.
Keep it up. How's, how's the job doing?
It's good.
Everything good? All right.
What'd you sell? What was the last thing you sold?
Uh, today I sold a couple of Smith &amp; Wesson shields.
There you go.
Yeah, very popular.
All right. Well, keep up the good work. Can't wait to talk to you next week.
All right, thanks.
All right, buddy.
I look forward to it.
Okie dokie. All right, folks. By the way, we are going to be at the Gun Show in Delmar on December 15th from 1 to 5. Thanks to San Diego County Gun Owners, you need to come down, support the Gun Show, support your Second Amendment rights. Come down and say hi, get your picture taken with Michael and Lance. That's Sunday, December 15th, 1 to 5. Probably be in the same area.
Yeah, it's gonna be in the same area. So, uh.
What hall is that?
They were, uh, it's O'Brien.
O'Brien, yeah.
So the, uh, they did sign a bill that said, hey, we're gonna ban the Gun Show, but that's gonna get, you know, sucked up into the lawsuit that's happening.
Right.
So there is a Gun Show in December, December 14th to 15th.
So tell your friends.
Definitely come down. Come down, uh, Sunday afternoon, cause that's when we're gonna be broadcasting. We're also gonna have a Santa Claus there.
Nice.
Yeah, we haven't announced this yet, but we're gonna have a Santa Claus there. And this is a legit Santa Claus. You, you bring your kids.
Yeah.
They'll be able to talk to Santa Claus, give them, uh, give Santa the, the list of things they want and, yeah, I think we're, you know, I think, you know, what I think we're gonna do is, uh, maybe like, do like some, some Red Ryder giveaways.
Sure.
Daisy Red Ryder giveaways.
Oh, wouldn't that be cool?
That'd be fun, right?
That'd be a blast.
So, but there's gonna be a lot going on.
But there's gonna be a lot of things going on at this Gun Show. It's gonna be a big
blowout party. Um, I mean, the reality is it might be the last.
It could be. Then, then again, if you're, come down and support it and tell your politicians how much you enjoyed it.
Yep.
And the fact that there were no loopholes, nobody selling guns under the table, no one selling ammo under the table, everything is upfront and legit. You go, I, I, I said this before, I went to the first, the one, my first one and only, and if it wasn't for what was on the table, it could have been fishing poles.
Yeah, it was awesome.
You wouldn't know that it was a Gun Show because it's that family, kids were there, grandparents were there. I mean, a lot of kids.
You know what I just thought of? How come nobody has taken advantage of, uh, like doing like a sale on scopes?
Yeah.
And calling it the, uh, the Gun Show Leupold.
We should put you in charge of PR.
That's enough of that.
All right. Hey, folks, don't forget to go to our podcast. It's up, it's fresh, it's running, www.gunsportsradio.com. You can share that information with your friends. If you ever missed a show, it's right there, www.gunsportsradio.com. And I think there's even a place there if you have a question, concern, you can send us a message or you can go to Facebook. We're there as well. We'll take comments and if you'd like to stump the man, that would be Sam the gunman. You can send information to, uh, san diego countygunowners.com. Tell them you got a really good, uh, question and you could end up with a t-shirt and a hat.